The upper. Up in the upper right hand corner, if you put your pointer up there, there's three dots. And you know, no, clicked on that and it will see. Okay, come on. Come on. And you you have a dropdown and it says, uh, let's see, rename. And then you can put your name in and your P S number, you know it. If you don't know it, I can look it up.
So can you look mine up? It used to be on there. I don't.
I think you have to do it every time.
You don't.
Unless if there's a way to to save it, I haven't I haven't figured that out, but.
Oh, it's there always.
Oh, is it?
Yep. Yep. So Dean, you're fifteen seventy one. You know, sixteen fifty five.
Yeah, now I I don't see. I've I've got the dropdown and I see my name just Daryl, but I don't see how to change it.
Okay, at the bottom of the the dropdown says rename.
Well, yeah, there's a little blue box up in the upper right hand corner of your your picture.
Oh, the picture.
And and to the right of it, there's three dots, I think, and that that's where you get the dropdown menu.
And I I I've got that.
Bottom bottom of that dropdown menu, it says rename. If you click on that, it'll. Uh, you can go in and and add information.
I I don't see that. It starts out with new tab, new window, new, uh.
To the right of mute, there should be another blue box with three dots.
Well, maybe I'm going to the wrong place.
On your picture. If you click on your name, you get a dropdown box and at the bottom, if you scroll down, it will say rename.
Actually, I've lost the picture now, so I don't I don't.
We can see you.
Well, Tad knows who everybody is, so I think that's the bottom line is, although if anybody's watching this online, it might. They might wonder who you are, but. Let them figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, well, uh, let's get started then. Uh, thank you all for joining us on this January afternoon. Uh, it's a good time to be inside, so. Today's a topic I thought we would just, it's sort of open an open forum, but. Uh, you know, everybody makes resolutions for the new year and, uh, in terms of genealogy or our research. Um, you know, set some resolutions or goals, however you want to frame them. But, uh, I know, for instance, you know, I've got, you know, and I actually have. Set up a little word doc, so to keep me honest of what I want to do, what I want to accomplish in the coming year. Uh, and fortunately, I'm, I feel very lucky that for the first time in a long time, in my own parks research. There's, uh, there are actually things to look at for a long time. Uh, I didn't know exactly where in North Carolina to look for my. Uh, and now we have a specific location and you can start finding some documents, some documentation and. Uh, it's beginning to lead to something, I think, uh, and that's very encouraging. Uh, but if any of you have any brick walls or or areas that you've. You're missing information that you're not sure quite where or how to find it. Uh, then feel free to to bring this up and and, you know, everyone here with our collective wisdom, maybe somebody will have ideas about. Uh, how to go about solving some of those issues. As I said, sometimes, you know, first of all, you just identify what your problem is. Uh, whether it's a brick wall ancestor, uh, or you need vitals for a certain individual, you know their name, but. Uh, you never found proof for, you know, birth or death or a marriage, something like that. Sometimes it's a spouse surname that, you know, eludes us, uh. Is that we know that's, uh, can, especially as we go back in time, is where we often hit brick walls is trying to find the the maiden name. Of a spouse, uh. In terms of brick walls, you know, uh, just. First of all, you sort of determine the area and and the record availability for that area. Because obviously you're not going to look for a birth certificate for somebody born in the seventeen hundreds as they didn't exist, that sort of thing. And, you know, I I always sound like a broken record, but, you know. DNA is an important part of solving a lot of brick wall issues, uh. It doesn't solve every issue, but it can certainly help and certainly point you in the right direction, and that's that's how. You know, we in our own, particularly in my and Dan's genetic group have made progress is through. DNA telling us where to look, uh, and who to look at, who we know is related, who we know is not. Uh, I, this morning, I was working on building out a family tree for the Mississippi branch that we suspect is. Uh, related to us and we're waiting for D DNA results. And I've gotten quite a quite a ways and then I discovered that I had put in a a branch. Uh, that I was pretty sure was. Part of that family. And when I got to a certain point about three or four generations down, I found a posting online. Uh, in in a a family tree on ancestry, uh, and it was a tree posted by Terry Parks. Ted will know who he is. Uh, used to be very active in the lineage key C line. And I I thought, well, why are these people in his tree? And sure enough, I went back and looked and I had it wrong. So I I spent a lot of the morning just going back, delete individual, delete individual till I got that cleared out. So, you know, the DNA is helpful because we had actually the person at the end of that. Grant. Uh, was actually a park society member who's passed away a few years ago, but he had done a DNA test. And and we know that was part of the lineage key C, not our genetic group, so. DNA can can keep you on the true path or open doors, uh.
Hey, I'm just curious, where in North Carolina did you, are you looking?
Uh, it's mainly in the Orange County line, uh, uh, area, although. Uh, as Orange, it got whittled down, then sometimes you're finding records in Alamance or Randolph or. Some of the little counties around there, uh, but it goes back earlier, uh, at least genetically, at least we think we do to the. Couple of skinny little counties right on the coast, Proquemmons and Chawan County. And and they, we know were Quakers. Uh, and I was just looking at some early. Deed records and and transactions came up. There was a James Park who was there. As early as seventeen sixteen. Uh, now whether he's any relation or not, but. We know there were some people there by seventeen forty four who were related to us, so. Uh, this is all just happening and it I it's exciting because it it'll it's enough to keep me busy all year long, I think. But, uh, in terms of vitals, we talked about, you know, if you're missing vitals on somebody. And and it's an era or something where where there. Were no death certificates or birth certificates or even marriage certificates. Uh, how are you going to find that information? Uh, I I find I use Find a Grave a lot. Again, everything you find online is subject to verification, but it's it's there there are clues. Uh, roadmap sometimes. People who post online trees and again, very problematic, but you you take it and and then go prove it other places. Early on, tax tax lists were a a way of determining. Whether somebody was in an area at a certain time, and if you're lucky enough to have. Tax tax lists in that area for consecutive years over a period of time, you can see where some. A particular male first appeared. And if he wasn't on there in in prior years. Uh, if he didn't just move to the area, then it means likely that he was there, but he had finally turned twenty one. And was now, you know, subject to paying taxes. It's a very rough. Uh, estimate of somebody's age, but it's in a in a in a timeframe when there aren't. Other records, it's a clue and it's a it's an estimation. Uh, obviously census records as as accurate or inaccurate as they can be. Newspaper accounts, uh. It's amazing how many old newspapers are available online now. Wills and probate obviously give you, uh. Information, jury lists, if you can find them. Uh, will place a a a male individual in an area if they were called for jury duty, uh, again. There's something called road orders. I've got some in Roan County, Tennessee in the early eighteen hundreds with my family on them. You know, in the early days, uh, able bodied men of an age were required to. Uh, spend a certain amount of time or money or whatever, uh, to help maintain and sometimes lay out and build new roads. Uh, and that again, not only places an individual in a in a time and an area. But where that road went from to where, if you can figure that out. Gives you an even more specific location of where they were in that area at the time. Uh, obviously, any kind of land records, uh, are are available. Uh, I'm I'm looking in this case in North Carolina at land grants that a Samuel Parks, you know, it's a. Very ubiquitous name in our line, uh, but his his first land grant was in seventeen sixty in Orange County and then. Uh, several others in in seventeen eighties, uh, before he passed away. In terms of spouse surnames, uh, there are all kinds of specialty, uh. Methods of finding them, uh. Here's a book. What's it called? Discovering Your Female Ancestors. Uh, and there there are a lot of things online, obviously, too, and this is not the only book. A lot of these things that I'm pulling off the shelf, these books I may show up are, some of them are are twenty years old or more, and so obviously. A lot of the information in them is is not dated because land records, me- methods are. Are are not going to change, but these were all written in an era long before we had. Availability of things on- online as we do now, so a lot of the information. That, you know, they suggest you would look for, uh, can now be found online, but, uh, at least it gives you strategies. And and ways of finding things out. Again, land records, here's Tennessee land records, uh. One county county Tennessee deeds from eighteen nineteen to eighty two to thirty three. This is back in the area. Era, there's chancery court records. This stuff's all, for the most part, online now. Uh, and and we we. If we don't realize, I think we all do, because we've all been doing this for long enough. Uh, how lucky we are compared to twenty years ago when we had to. Go to the courthouses and or go to a a family history center and scroll through microfilm and that sort of thing. Uh, even for census information, when I started out, you know, yeah, you had to load. You had to look in a in a printed index, get the right reel of. Of microfilm and put it on and scroll through until you found something and now. You know, you can whip through that stuff, you know, and. Love them or hate them and, you know, you you start looking for somebody and they'll give you every census year that they popped up. Uh, sometimes it's not the right individual, but usually it is, uh, and it's very easy to get spoiled with all of that. Again, I think I've mentioned this before, but I think this is probably the most useful book that I have in. And I keep it on my desk all the time is William Dollar Hyde's. Uh, map guide to the US federal censuses, uh, because it gives you. You know, every census year and when the counties came into being, you can see what counties were formed out of them. It also tells you, especially in the earlier censuses, which counties are available, which censuses are lost, so. Uh, I know, for instance, in Roan County, Tennessee, where my my Samuel first shows up in the eighteen thirty census. He was there by then, he could have been there ten years earlier, but. There's no eighteen twenty census available, uh, it's lost, so. Uh, that's all all this kind of thing that, uh. We we can look for and use, so, um, anybody got any? Any challenges for the group that, uh, in in your own research? Everybody's research is completely done and.
Uh, I have a resource, uh. Early, uh. American handwriting.
It's over on my shelf.
You got that one too, yeah.
And and believe me, you need it sometimes because. Trying to read some of those old, uh, deeds or wills or whatever, uh, can be challenging. Especially when the image is not necessarily as clear as it could be.
Yeah. If the images, uh, which are only probably available on family search. Uh, are haven't been indexed. You will have a difficult time browsing through all the deeds and conveyances. Trying to find your ancestor's name anywhere.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, that's a. Something that hasn't been overcome yet.
No, we're still waiting for AI to take over the world. Uh, you know, you talk about reading early handwriting. Well, you know, I wonder, you know, we talk about how they're. Not teaching cursive handwriting to the younger generations, uh, you know, this will be like. For them, it could be like trying to decipher, you know, Chinese or something. I mean, it's. It would be unavailable to them. So. Uh, I guess there's there's some some advantage in having a few gray hairs right now.
Yeah.
So Ken, I have a new resource. I don't know if you guys have seen this book. I don't know, let's see, maybe here.
I think if you hold it still for a second, it'll focus.
A little further back maybe.
It said Thomas, it's Thomas McKenty, uh, put this together and and, uh, it's starting to. Oh, I thought I got it there for a minute.
If you if you pull it back, you there, there. There it's starting to come into focus. Pull it back a little bit more.
I think.
Okay.
Your background.
I'll I'll put it in the chat, the name. Okay, there it is. But this is a new book that he put together with online resources for the different states in the United States. It just came out. And you can buy it in Amazon or you can buy it in his website. And, uh, everything is by state and it just lists archives and the local resources that are online. That you can contact and or use. And I think it's, he did a lot of like work to put this together. And I got a copy of it and I recommend it highly. If, um, I'll put the information in the chat. So, um, it's his new book and it's. It's like paperback, uh, style, it's not hard copy. So I'll I'll put the information there. You can check it out and see if you can use it, but it's pretty good.
Yeah, he, uh, I know Tom, I've met him at different things. Actually, he's from this area where I live now. Uh, his parks line is is, he grew up, uh, not too far from where I am now. But, uh, he also has a an interesting, uh, Facebook page or blog, uh, called Genealogy Do-over, uh, that you might want to check out. And a a lot of it's about, uh, he he puts out a lot of resources on that, but it's also about, uh. And and I've never been quite ambitious to do it, but you know, when you've been doing things for years and. You didn't always start out, you know, citing sources or filing things in the best way to be able to re. Refine them, uh, he he does recommend sometimes, you know, just doing this. Do-over, which, uh, isn't. Totally out of line with what we're talking about now. Uh, sometimes, you know, if you're stuck or you don't seem to be making progress, maybe it's time to. Step back and take a look at what you have and what you know and what you. Personally don't know, uh. Uh, I often find it, uh. Trying to write something up about a genealogy problem or something will reveal to yourself. What gaps there are in your knowledge, what you need to fill in and what you need to know. Tad?
Uh, I, yeah, good point, um. The other day I ran into something and so I decided to say, okay. My grandfather, I'm wondering if he's listed anywhere in ancestry. And so I went out to ancestry and I've actually found seventeen entries for him. And I, you know, I went down each one and I will actually wrote some letters to some of them. Uh, I did get some responses. I got a follow up on those, but I made a discovery that really kind of shook me. Um, because they had one where, okay, it showed my father, that's good. And then they showed his children, me. And there I am, and and, you know, I don't know where he got the information, but he's using uses my name and religion, Michael. Which I I was surprised that and I did send him a, you know, I I said, I'm not upset by it or anything, but I was. Sort of surprised that there I am listed, you know. And, uh, but he, I want to get in touch with him because he has some information about a non parental event. That I want to follow up with, but he hasn't responded to me as yet. But, you know, sometimes just going out there and and, you know, I. Yes, as as Ken said, you always have to sort of, you know, just take everything with its. Sort of John this guy, but at least there may be things in there that are clues. That you had not seen before, because there are so many thousands of people working online. Um, you know, it's just some, it's just amazing what you'll find. And of course, you will find sometimes that what information they have is absolutely not correct. Uh, matter of fact, these people I did write to, I said, okay, I can give you some specific information firsthand that I know and I have documented for. You know, so I'm I'm offering them help, but I also would like them to tell me what else they may know that they haven't posted. But, you know, just going back there and putting in a name and seeing how many trees there are. And then sorting through them and looking at them, uh, the only thing I'm not happy about with ancestry. Um, when you pull up, you set up the names and they'll say. It comes up first, probably one entry to that name, and you can say, see more like this. And then he'll show you the, uh, more entries and then you take one and says, see. Uh, let's say it has seventeen trees, okay? So then you click on that and you list out the trees, so that's great. So you go to a tree, but when you go to go back. They'll take you back two steps. You don't go back to the one. And I don't know why they changed that. I wish they hadn't because that makes it more, it makes extra clicks. And I I'm trying to, I like to talk with somebody there that, you know, said that I can. Explain what I'm seeing now and what I used to see and can they change that back, you know? I don't know why they would have done it the way they did, but it's always you're just. Hold it, plug in a name and dates and just see what comes up and then look at those entries, so.
Ted, I'm I'm curious, that was an ancestry tree tree that you found your name on?
Yep.
Uh, that seems so odd because anybody that doesn't have a death date in a tree really should be marked as private. I thought that was a default, uh.
I don't think it's a setting, it's something in the settings.
But I was so surprised. I was like, oh, my gosh, sex screening. In in the fact that it shows.
Unless he he didn't have a date of death for you, did he?
I can think is to have found that he must have. Somehow tripped on my biography either in the the Episcopal stud book or in the, uh, you know. In the diocese where I'm at, you know, because I I just, because that's not necessarily out there, my, the name that I use. So.
Um, just to catch up here, uh, thank you for posting, both of you, uh. Like Ali posted the the book that she had mentioned and then Sarah said she found it. It is available for free. On Kindle Unlimited, so, uh, I'll I'll try to copy all that. I'll. I'll put some things out on on a a resource page. That will be when we post this online that you you can click on and I'll make sure that that information's on there, so thank you both. Yeah, we like free, although I I have trouble reading on a Kindle, but if the price is right, yeah.
Yeah, but you can get Kindle things on your computer screen. You don't have to read it on that, on the Kindle. So I can get, I can read Kindle on my desktop.
I did not know that. There's a lot, there's a lot that I don't know, especially when it comes to newer technology.
Do you have a special app to read the Kindle on your PC?
Yeah, you just get the Kindle app. You just download it onto your, whatever you have. Uh, laptop, desktop, whatever.
Um, I I know it won't happen in this upcoming issue of the newsletter because I I'm way, way behind in this, but. In the future, at some point, maybe the next issue after that, uh, talking about books, uh, I I'm going to. Finish reading them and then sort of do a little capsule reviews about several books, uh, by authors who are named Parks, uh. Uh, some of them are living, some of them are not, but, uh. Uh, it 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 and it's an interesting gamut gamut, uh. Uh, I've got a new, fairly new book, uh, an author named Tim Parks. Uh, who lives in Milan, Italy, but he's he's British. He's from around, uh, Manchester, I think. And, uh, he he, what first. The name caught my eye first is because he actually has come out with, he translates Italian works into English. He's that proficient. In Italian, he's lived in in Italy for like sixteen years. But this is a new novel written in English that he had Hotel Milano, so I'm going to read that and and review it and. Uh, there's one by a distant cousin of, uh, Dan and and mine who. Uh, unfortunately, uh, he and he is a DNA participant, but he died. Shortly after he took the test and so I was never able to contact him, but. After some time, his 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 daughter got in touch, uh. And so he he had written a book. He taught at Princeton. Uh, and I I dearly wish I'd been able to meet him. He sounds really interesting. But it's called, uh, Hi Ho Sir Homer. It's a novel, so, uh, Lee, Lee R. Parks, uh, Richard. Uh, and interesting that just a a anecdote about that. Uh, as I said, he taught at Princeton, it's near and and. They lived in Lambertville, New Jersey, which is just across the river from New Hope, Pennsylvania. Uh, in Bucks County. And I used to be an actor. I did summer stock at Bucks County Playhouse in nineteen eighty four. And we we had done about four or five shows into the season and the producer was a crook. Uh, he's he's actually in jail right now. But, uh, the union had a lot of problems with him because he was a crook. Uh, and so at a certain point in the season, they pulled us, union actors out, uh. Uh, and the show that we were in rehearsal for at the time, we'd only had a couple rehearsals, was Fiddler on the Roof. And. As it turns out, this daughter of Lee Parks, uh, Jen Parks, uh. Played the youngest daughter in that production. Uh, she was just a young girl at the time. Had I stayed, had I been able to do that production, we would have met. What, how many years ago is that? Uh, forty years ago or more, uh, we were just ships passing in the night. Of course, in nineteen eighty four. I hadn't even begun to do genealogy, certainly not DNA, so I would never have suspected that we were genetically related anyway. But I just. Thought it was odd that out of, uh, these, you know, completely different. Life paths and and directions that we happened to be in same time. Yeah, that many years ago. Uh, and there are, uh, several other books, uh, by authors with the Parks name that, uh. Uh, I'll try to to review as well. And and if any of you come up with things like that and want to write about them for the newsletter, please, please, please get in touch. We're always looking for stuff. Any kind of even family reminiscences or or anything, uh. We we had a an article, I think, in the last issue by Lindsay Colasa. And it got a an amazing amount of positive feedback. It's just so nice to hear from all of you. I see she's left, uh, her chair at the moment, but I was going to say something to Sarah Chandler because she's got some. she's got some interesting stories in her family and I've urged her, uh, to write about them for the newsletter. So, uh, you know, if you got any interesting, and I, it's the skeletons in the closet that make the best story. So, you know, dig around and see what you can come up with. Anybody else have any issues or anything in their Parks line? Or even, uh, Sarah, while you were gone, I was talking about you.
I had to, I had to find my dog.
Yeah. I was talking about how, uh, you know, uh, we had a, a recent newsletter article by Lindsay Colasa, a member that got a lot of positive feedback. And I know we've talked about, you've got some interesting stories, family stories that uh, I really hope you might find the time to write them up for the newsletter sometime, at some point.
You mean the Tabor Theater fiasco?
Yep, yep. Yeah. Uh, well, don't give away the plot, but, but, uh, it would make a great article. So.
The Washington Tribune and it happened in Denver. So.
Yeah.
But you know, just speaking about barriers, I'm still stuck at the same, the same dead end with which of Roger Park Junior's kids are in my house. Was it Jonah? And there's almost no information about Jonah. And was there another generation between Jonah and, uh, David?
Yeah. Uh, remind me, is it, it's your brother that has tested?
My cousin.
Your cousin.
Yeah, we have the same.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'll, we take a look at it, but it, it is expensive and it can be time consuming, but if you can upgrade, upgrade his test to the big Y, uh, is the first step I would recommend. And then let's see if we can get more people in that group to upgrade. Uh, and then begin to target and try to find individuals who would go back to those brothers that you're trying to figure out. Because, uh, that is a way that you might be able to break through that. It will, it would take a lot of work and, and, and a certain amount of money. But I, at least, you know, that the science is there. Uh, it's no guarantee, but, uh, you know, because uh, once you get to a certain point with the SNP mutations, uh, if you get enough of people in those various branches to test their private variants, and if they start sharing them, will be, get you closer and closer and closer uh, in time to the present. And you might be able to figure it out that way.
And that's all lost on me. Like I go on the DNA website and just go, uh.
But, uh, well, you know, we can talk sometime, but, uh, and I can maybe sort of show you some examples of how that can happen. Uh.
Okay. Okay. I can look at the upgrading and see. Where I am and where I need to go.
Yeah.
It's the same line as Magalene's line, the LKK. But some, some family trees say it's that our ancestor is John, but I think that early research done by Celia and others said it was not John. My line.
Well, we, we need Susan Avery here to speak to some of that.
Well, Susan just said, we don't know.
But the, the thing is, I think there are at least the possibility of finding out with.
Exciting. I would like to do.
Uh, and we talked about it before, some of those groups, uh, well-known lines like Kay uh, or the Thomas of Virginia, Lynch K C, uh, the, the Robert, they're huge groups in our project. But so few of those people have, uh, have tested to the big Y level. Uh, because a lot of them tested a good number of years ago. Uh, but it's a challenge, but we need to start trying to get those groups. Uh, you know, more and more people in there, uh, upgraded to that level.
But that doesn't require a new sample, right?
Hmm. In some cases it might, uh, it depends on how many times a sample and storage, uh, has been accessed to upgrade to or add additional tests. Like if somebody started at the twelve market level and they upgraded to thirty-seven or sixty-seven, or they ordered the Family Finder or mitochondrial, every time they have to go in and use some of the sample. And so, yeah, we do sometimes run into the case where if they don't have enough sample, they will send a new kit. But.
It'll bring three and, you know, if we have to do that, we better do it quick.
Is deceased, uh, then you're, you know, there's nothing you can do, uh, other than uh, try to find another close family member, uh, to do the test.
Okay. Hey, I, I actually have, this is very esoteric. I have some trimmings from my great grandfather's hair.
Hmm.
Which were kept when he died.
That, that is cutting edge. Uh, uh, family tree DNA is not, has not gone there yet. There are some commercial companies that are are promising or teasing us with the fact that they may be able to do that. Originally years ago, we always heard that, uh, hair samples had to have the root, uh, because that's where they would get the DNA sample. Now I've read that they are claiming they may be able to recover DNA just from, you know, like hair that you would pick off, off, off the floor of a barber shop. Uh, but it, it, it's still, I think, cutting edge, maybe not quite that available to the public and last but not least, I'm sure it's not cheap. But, uh, that would be, it would be, uh, revolutionary in terms of, of DNA testing. If, if, well, Marilyn here, uh, you, you went through an issue of trying to, to, don't you have a ring that belonged to your, your father?
I do. I do. Yes.
And, uh, that there might be a possibility of retrieving some of his DNA from that ring, but that again, that's, it's just, we're, I don't think we're quite there yet.
Marilyn, was it you or, or I or someone else who found a company in Australia that does that?
I, I think you did, Gary.
Did I? And, and I think, um, it was like at least $2,000.
Yeah.
But I think they do it in phases where if you send in the object, the hair, whatever, they will evaluate it, do some minor testing to see if they can, they think they can get some, some good results out of it and may only charge you a few hundred. And if they feel that they can, then they'll go and test and you might come up with a bill of, you know, a couple or several thousand dollars. And the other thing is Australia, you know, your, your ring was very valuable and sentimental to you. So, you know, you weren't anxious to send it off halfway around the world.
Take it there yourself.
There you go.
No, and, and, and even if you got some DNA results from that sort of test, I'm not sure if it would be possible to incorporate them into a, a firm like FTDNA so that it could be compared with others. Uh, I, I'm just not sure how that would all work. Uh.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, but isn't it amazing that we live in a time when this can even be discussed as a possibility, you know?
And, you know, and the other problem there is since how do you really know that's that person's DNA and there wasn't somebody else who wore the ring or something? You know, you know, that might have sold, but that would be, that'd be kind of touch and go unless he knew for sure that no one else ever put that ring on their finger. You know, you, you always have that possibility of, you know, maybe it's not the right DNA. And that's one of the issues I have with, with, uh, forensics and, and police work was a, you know, go for DNA, but are they getting the right DNA or are they getting somebody else's DNA? You know, that, you know, might, you know, might cause a problem for somebody that they shouldn't, you know? That's, that's an easy point, you know? Uh, before, I'd have to be pretty desperate to, you know, to kind of do something like that because I couldn't be sure that it really was, would be the right DNA, you know? So.
Yeah, um. At this point, you know, the best way, uh, of retrieving DNA from a family line is to find living individuals who can answer those questions by testing. Uh, and I, I realize that sometimes that isn't possible. You know, it's the end of a line or, or something, but, uh, you know, compared to, you know, trying to retrieve DNA from an artifact and, and that kind of money. Uh, if you can work around it using more traditional means of a, a close family member or more, uh, and seeing how their DNA, what that tells you would be the way to go first, if, if it's an option. Sometimes it isn't. Yeah.
Ken, I've got a question now real quick for you. I just upgraded my, uh, sample to the big Y seven hundred. And family tree DNA says it takes about six to eight weeks to get the results. And I'm just about six weeks out right now. But when I hear from family tree DNA and since you and Gary are both on here this afternoon, what, what do you recommend that maybe I think about doing now?
Be patient. Oh, I'm just, I'm saying, I, I think the six to eight weeks is even optimistic these days. That's, it was running that way, but now I, I'm, I, I plan on sometimes three months or more. Uh, uh, and I've seen horror stories online posted up. And, and sometimes, you know, they can't get a clear result and they may have to rerun the test. Uh, it, it can take months and months sometimes. Uh, but uh, even so, if, if everything goes well, hopefully, yeah, within a, a a month or less, you'll have some, some results and, uh, then we'll, we'll both take a look at it and see what it says and, and, you know, of course it's always in comparison to who else has, has tested in the group. Uh.
Well, I think I'm the only member in my lineage key right now. And, uh, what, uh, what I've discovered here about three months ago, looking at my matches over the last twenty years, I've got about fifty of them and the most distant paternal ancestor comes back with a surname of Stewart. About forty-five of them spelled S T E W A R T. And five or six spelled S T U A R T. And that's kind of what prompted me to, uh, upgrade my, my sample up to the big Y seven hundred. But personally, I kind of wonder if there might be something there of interest to me because my traditional research, uh, I've gotten no DNA matches that's ever come back to a, a paternal ancestor with the last name of Parks spelled any way at all.
Well, uh, uh, one way of determining sort of where that Stewart DNA may have come in is to find a, a distant cousin, like fourth or fifth or sixth cousin, if you can find one and have them test. And if you know where you both connect in your family line going back, uh, depending on whether they match your Stewart DNA or match other Parks, they, you could begin to determine where that might have come in. Uh, it may have, it may have been back you know, beyond where you've been able to trace your Parks line back. You, you just don't know until again, you're comparing it with others. Uh, uh, have you, have you joined a, a Stewart surname project as well?
No, no, I haven't.
You, you should, uh, because then they, they would be able to place you genetically with, if, if there exists, uh, you know, others who, those others who you match. Uh, and you might begin to, you know, find some geographical commonalities or something like that. Uh, you know, uh, for instance, I mean, there's a, uh, an N P E and I forget which line it is, which parks line, but it was somewhere in Kentucky. Uh, and we, we could go back and, and sort of figure out when that may have happened and when his Parks line was living in the same area of Kentucky at that time with a surname that he seems to match. Uh, at least gives you some, some way to, you know, to sort of direct and, and, and an idea of when that might have happened. But then again, DNA testing, the more the merrier. The more people you have to compare to, the more information that you can glean just by comparing not only just the DNA, but also their, their, their paper records.
Dean, have you tested autosomal DNA, Family Finder?
Uh, no, not the autosomal, just the Y chromosome.
That might be something you may want to do, um, because that helps you find through all the way back to fifth cousins. If you're looking for fifth cousins that match you named Parks or Stewart, you know, you might be able to learn from them if you can get them to contact you. Uh, they may know something. Um, and, and, uh, autosomal test is only on sale forty-nine dollars. Normally seventy-nine, so it's not that big of an investment.
Yeah. Um, and I, I hate to say it, well, I shouldn't hate to say it because I have no financial interest in family tree DNA. But with autosomal, really the, the best way to do it, it's a little more convoluted in a way is to test it ancestry first. Uh, and their prices are comparable. And once those results come in, you can download that file and upload it to family tree DNA. And so now you're comparing two different databases and ancestries is by a factor of probably ten larger than family tree DNAs. Uh, so you're going to get a lot more, uh, it, it has its drawbacks ancestry DNA, but, uh, it's still, the people are there. Uh, and, uh, you know, in my own instance, I was just looking at a, a sheet that I drew up of a lot of trying to triangulate where I have DNA matches to people from different parks lines. Uh, and it doesn't prove that our connection is through the Parks line. But they usually show a connection to other Parks lines that we know are related through Y. And, and it at least gives you an idea that the connection is probably that way. And that's all on ancestry. Uh, and, and that's not even, you know, comparing, you know, the family trees all that finely, because a lot of them, uh, as you know, you, you'll look on somebody's family tree on ancestry and it's got three people in it and two of them are marked private. Yeah. So, uh, sometimes you have to do all the work for them and build out their family tree from what little information you can gather. But, you know, if you're going to do the autosomal, I'd start with ancestry. Uh, and then transfer it into family tree DNA.
Okay. Well, that's a good feedback. I'll keep that in mind.
But we'll keep an eye out for your big Y results too.
Well, me too.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Carrie, I don't think you sneaked in on us here. I, uh, good to see you.
Hear me at all?
Now we can, yeah.
Okay, because I don't have my regular mic. I'm here, but my mic is picking up, but.
Yeah. Yeah. No, were you, were you playing flute when you first logged on or was that just a, a, a photo that we're seeing?
That's, uh, something that Zoom has for cameras not lit up.
Yeah, okay.
I think the question is, do you play the flute?
Oh, yes, he does. Yeah.
Indeed. There's actually.
I'm on other things.
Yeah, right. Once, you know, on Irish session, you know, how you get groups of people together to play music, right? So I made an Irish session with myself playing four different instruments and I changed clothes each time. So it was like different people. The Christmas tree was in the background. It was during the pandemic.
Did you record that?
Oh, have you seen it? I thought.
Oh, no, send me the link. Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's, uh, I'll, I'll send it right. I mean, I'll post it in this, in the chat here. It's, it's on, it's on my YouTube channel, which has a bunch of stuff that has nothing to do with music or DNA or anything.
Yeah.
But, um, let me, let me go get it.
I'll, uh, I'll see if I can scare that up too. Yeah. Well, Sarah just posted that she plays the penny whistle. So maybe. You make them.
Yeah, well, I use, I, I have the ability to, I, I, um, let's see, I stopped going looking for that. So I was making, making them out of PVC so they would survive in a kayak in saltwater at the beach. And, um, And um, so hey, make me one, hey, make me one. So I made, I made them and the more you make, the better you get at making them. Now the more you fine tune your your jigs and stuff and, um, and then I um got friendly with one of my suppliers who was making clear plastics. And that went off in a whole nother direction where I anyhow, um, I sold thirty-seven hundred of them.
Whoa.
Um, online mainly. I had, I had a dealer in Hamburg, Germany. He just closed his brick and mortar facility. He's still selling online. He still wants my whistles. But the um pandemic happened and then I had a hip, two hips replaced, so I wasn't standing in the lady for very long. So I, I quit making whistles and then right, right whenever I was ready to start making whistles again, we had the hurricane. And now I've only got half of the lady equipment, but I had before the hurricane. I just haven't wrapped up yet. But uh, but yeah, I, I, in fact, my customers tell me they like my better than others, so. Um, but what, yeah, oh yeah, I was looking for that, for that. Talk amongst yourselves, I'll find it here.
Yeah. Fun to maybe have a, a, a musical town hall meeting where everybody who you know, is able to, you know, does a little presentation or something, get a little variety.
Gary, you did that one time already, didn't you? I think you played, uh.
You didn't play the chorus once, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it's um, let's see here. Oh, is that it? No, that's not it.
Well, send, send me the link and I'll put it on that, uh, resource sheet that I'll post with the, uh, recording of the meeting. So everybody can find, yeah. So if anybody else plays or sings or dances or juggles or whatever, we'll, we'll have a variety show. Well, anybody else got anything? Uh?
Well, I, I might have found, uh, where my fifth great grandfather in Ireland lives.
And that, is that, that's through DNA led you there?
It's a, it's a combination of, um, digging up some old resources and, um, the, the DNA, the big Y and, uh, what a symbol, you know, I found a lot of cousins that we all matched the same ancestor and there was a story written up, um, probably around in nineteen hundreds, it was put in a Bible. And, uh, around nineteen fifty-nine, it was passed on to somebody in the D A R and they published in the uh, New Jersey Genealogical Society, a manuscript and somebody later on found that and, uh, the story basically said that our patriot's father was, uh, in Alexander Park in uh, Ireland. And then, but of course it didn't say where in Ireland. But then there was a couple other resources um, in Ohio, uh, biographies, history of Hancock County, Ohio, and history of Harden County, Ohio, some of the descendants of our patriot. And one of them mentioned that the, the ancestors were of Irish descent from Antrim and Tyrone counties. And didn't really know what that meant because it talked about a husband and a wife. And maybe one side of the family was from Antrim, one was from Tyrone. Um, and then there was another biography that said that the family was of Scotch Irish descent. Um, I'm sorry, Scotch descent. So I didn't really know where to look in Ireland, so I started looking through some old, uh, Irish records. Um, and I found a nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, a seventeen forty Protestant household in return. And in, I was looking for an Alexander Park and the only Alexander Park that I found, there were two and they were in a town of Rocharken Parish. Uh, Kill Conway Barony, Antrim, um, county in Northern Ireland. And my patriot was born in seventeen thirty-nine. So he would have been one year old when this household of return came out in Ireland. And there was no other Alexander, there was also a John Park list, which was probably an older ancestor. So Alexander and John and it just seemed to make sense. And then recently, um, in the Y thirty-seven or Y sixty-seven matches, um, I found a gentleman that his tree didn't really connect with mine. But he certainly matched me, so we would have the same ancestor back in Ireland or Scotland somewhere. And lo and behold, we got him to test, uh, big Y, which were the results are not in yet, should be in sometime in the next two or three weeks. So we're looking for that to come in. And, um, he, his family, he's, I think, first generation or second generation Canadian. But he still has family back in Ireland. And lo and behold, there were one town over from Rocharken and, uh, Valley Mina. Uh, so you know, when his results come in, if he matches me with the, the big Y, yes, the, the snip, the haplogu. Um, it's very conclusive that looks like that's where my, my Alexander lived. So looks like we've, we found him in Ireland.
Yeah. Uh, well, uh, and there's another, Gary's group is, uh, it's a thirty, right?
Uh, yes.
Group number thirty. Uh, there's another group, uh, in our project with roots in Antrim. That's very active. Uh, there's one fellow in particular, he's a new park society member, John Park, who lives in Luxembourg right now. He was born in Canada, but his parents were from Antrim. Uh, and he has, still has family back there and they have done, uh, more than a dozen, more than a dozen, uh, big Y tests. And they're really honing in on things. They are going to meet in Antrim and gather, uh, next July. And I'm going to go over there and crash their party, uh, because, uh, while I'm there, I'm going to try to meet some of my cousins in County Armagh, which is just below that. Uh, but, uh, we're, I also want to try to meet, uh, a fellow and his name is escaping me now. Uh, who's while there, who's very active in trying to get DNA testing, you know, more prevalent, uh, in, in Ireland. Uh, and anything we can do to find more park, parks over there who are willing to test, that's going to help bridge that gap and, and narrow things down. And the same thing with England. Uh, you know, I, I want to get more people over in the British Isles and other parts of the country, Australia. Um, I, I'm planning to do an article for this next, uh, newsletter, uh, on a, an Alexander Parks who was from, I think it was, uh, Birmingham, I think, uh, who was the inventor of plastic, who knew? Uh, eighteen fifties, I think he came up with, it was called Park Scene. Uh, and it was sort of like, you know, if you've heard of Bakelite, uh, which was an early form of plastic. Uh, and so his, his brother Henry was assisting him. He was a metallurgist apparently. Uh, but there are others, uh, in that Staffordshire area around there, uh, who uh, I, I want to research and we need to get DNA from a lot of those. I know a couple of those lines I talked about went, one went to Australia, one went to New Zealand. And, uh, they also, the, the, uh, we talked about the, uh, purse house name, which popped up in our project, which matches the Lieutenant Lieutenant Richard, uh, Parks in New England early on. Uh, and uh, that purse house, uh, line goes back into the fifteen hundreds in Staffordshire. So uh, the more DNA we can get, I, I'd love to be able to sort and, and, and like any other area, there may be more than one genetic line from that area, but uh, I'd love to get in there and get that DNA and, and try to sort out some of those lines, especially that can go back into the fifteens and sixteen hundreds. Uh, and, and that's not the only area of, of England. Uh, you know, I Robert, uh, the, the line lineage key T that the Park Society was founded on, uh, I Gesundheit.
Try to mute it, sorry.
Yeah, Ted can correct me, but I think, uh, we know at least two generations earlier than, and then, uh, Robert Park, the immigrant.
Yes.
Art Mel, uh, over there. And, uh, I, I just can't help thinking that, you know, some of those people stayed behind and there might still be some genetically related parts, you know, there that we could get testing from. So it's, uh, the potential for DNA to open up all of this is is fascinating. It's not easy, it's not cheap, but I think it's, it, the possibility is there, Ted. Ted?
Uh, I just for the heck of it, um, Dean, uh, have you ever worked on, uh, do you have a membership at ancestry dot com?
Are you talking to me, Ted?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I just became a member in a family group plan on ancestry.
Okay. Uh, have you ever taken, plugged in some names from your line to see what to come up with?
No, not yet.
Okay, I did. Okay, this is just one, I don't know how many family trees there are connected with this. But I first off, I plugged in Joseph and his wife, uh, uh, Susanna Stone King, didn't come up with anything. But I went to the next generation, what we call two A and four, Joseph Crawford Park. And, um, I, you know, plugged that in and I got, um, now this is just looking at one tree. But they had the father as Joseph Jackson Park. Born seventeen sixty-nine, died eighteen eighty-two. Now they have him born in, well, they called it West Virginia, but that would be Virginia in seventeen ninety-six. Um, and he born there, married Susanna Stone King, um, died in Iowa in eighteen eighty-two. They have his father as, and Andrew Addis Park. Born seventeen sixty, Donegal County, Ireland. And his wife Mary Ann Anderson. Now seventeen sixty is a bit early for middle names. You know, but, but you know, he died eighteen forty-eight, um, let's see, go down here.
Ted, I, I missed, what county in Ireland was that?
Donegal.
Donegal, okay.
Uh, he died in fifteen, well, they got fifteen years, but that's, uh, my, uh, Montgolia County, I'm not pronouncing that right. Uh, uh, in eighteen forty-eight. And then they have with very little information, Andrew Park and a wife Sarah, which would obviously be in Ireland. So, you know, um, there's what I said, you know, now, as I said, I just plugged into the first tree that came up. And I don't know how many other trees, need to back up and see if I can see if I can go there. All right, let's see. All right, let's go with that, something that's up pretty short. Okay, let's see. All right, let's see. Okay, let's see. Do you want Crawford, see all, he's in a five tree. So there's plenty of trees to look at, okay? And, uh, they, you know, that's, you know, that's the, you know, there, there's, there's your clues, you know, you can go work from there, okay? Uh, so that's, that's, we want to check out.
Well, and a lot of those.
About a year ago, I discovered that, uh, in ancestry alone, that my second great grandfather is listed in four hundred and twenty-four different family trees.
Right.
And it's been incredibly confusing, but getting back to that Andrew Addis Park Senior. Uh, the genetic testing or the DNA testing that I'd done twenty years ago shows that there's no no genetic relationship between my second great grandfather and that Andrew Addis Park.
Okay.
And from that, I've kind of decided that maybe, uh, my second great grandfather was adopted. And Andrew Addis Park was a foster father.
It could be, you know, those, those darn, uh, non-母子 events um, do give us a problem, you know, trying to figure out, okay, where did this come from? And I, I have that in my own family line. And, you know, so it's, it's a problem, but, you know, that's, that's interesting, okay? So take a look at some of that information and as I said, you know, and, and take a look at that second great grandfather, see you know, now four hundred and twenty-three is just a lot to go through, especially the way they the way they've changed that. So you have to go back steps and then forward again. I just, I wish they have not changed that. So I have one other thing that I'd like to bring up. It's not related to DNA or, or death. Uh, but Herbie Koch Park, number sixty-two. Uh, Herbie Koch Park is the grandson of, uh, Herbie Koch Park of Clark Davis, from a so, and suitable. And, uh, he woke me, he has two framed portraits of some of, of, of one of the female lines. And the question he had was, you know, he's trying to downsize and he wants to find a place for these. And he's having a problem because none of his kids are interested in it. And I think all of us probably have issues with that, with stuff. I have a, uh, a living room table, oval marble top table that actually comes from eighteen forty that it's in beautiful shape. I had it refinished and I had the marble on it is absolutely there's one extremely tiny dowel in the top of it, otherwise it's perfect. And, you know, to that goal, you know, I, you know, it's just it's to me, it's from the park, it's from the page line, which was through my grandmother. Now, she was a page. And, you know, um, and, you know, so where do you find someone to bidly scenes to that will value them and will keep them in the family? Uh, I have a music box. It's from eighteen ninety. That's in perfect shape, still plays. As a matter of fact, whenever I have guests in the house, I always open it up and start it. You know, and then I watch life, uh, eyes wide up. I'm like, where's that coming from? Where's that? What's that? A music box? It's, yes, there it is, you know? And the question is, is okay, I'm not going to be around here forever. Several people are probably glad of that, but that's another issue. Uh, but I say, you know, where do I, you know, find somebody who wants this, who will value it? And, you know, and I, I'm telling, uh, Herbie, I said, well, if there's no one in your family, find out where those people were involved, what organizations they might have been involved with. Maybe one of those organizations that were involved in would be something that would like to have those two portraits of the husband and wife. And they're very nice portraits. They're, you know, I would say they're two by three feet portraits. And, you know, because, you know, you really don't the saddest thing is by those portraits, they take, you know, they empty them out and save the frames while history is missing them, you know? So I think we all have that issue. Maybe we ought to make a list of those things that we have, that we really want to go to somebody who will value, evaluate them, you know, and hold them on. I have a pier mirror that used to be in the front room of the Park House back in Mitchell School. It needs some work. I've brought it out here, it's in my garage, you know, all encased. But I need to get that downstairs and I need somebody to show me how to do gold reaching and so forth. To, you know, to restore that. The mirror itself, it's, it's ancient and, you know, it's, there's some um, some of the reflecting is on a little bit of it, but that's fine. This is an antique. You know, you don't, you don't re-surface the mirror in an antique piece. But, you know, I need to make a list of those items that are from the family that need to go back to the family somehow. So, you know, so that, you know, that's what I'm going to tell, I, I, the new. so that, you know, that's what I'm gonna tell, I, I, do you, any of you have ideas about how to find places for things?
Well, local historical society sometimes will, will take things like that. Uh, and they may or may not have the ability to display them or on a permanent basis, but uh, that's a possibility. Uh, and, you know, years, years ago, years ago, I had uh, some, a, a, a husband of a cousin uh, had connections and got a lot of the early sort of blueprint maps or something of the area in Tennessee where uh, there was a little town where some of my family lived that was, was flooded when they, the TBA started building their dams. Uh, and it showed the location of houses and who lived there and all that sort of thing. And uh, at, I had kept them here for a long time. They were, they were big, rolled up in a tube. And at some point I thought, well, this, these aren't doing anybody any good, you know, sitting in my closet. So I donated them to the uh, local historical society down there. And uh, I think they may have framed some of them and put them up on the wall, but at least they're there and and accessible. Uh, Dan, you were gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, don't pass, don't pass up on the hope that uh, maybe you'll be contacted one day by one of the descendants and that's how we managed to acquire some extremely old photographs that we knew existed at one point. But yeah, we just happened to find the last of the of the nine siblings who was still alive and we just were able to acquire just some wonderful items. Nothing quite like tables or music boxes, but still, it was we about fell out of the chairs when we saw them.
Uh, Ted, you were mentioning um, ancestry dot com trees and I don't really know much about ancestry dot com. I don't use it that much, but you know, if there are people that are descended from the ancestors of the people that own these possessions, maybe could they be contacted through ancestry dot com? Is that possible?
It could be. I've never always had, but I was surprised that of the six letters that I sent out, I got nine letters. I got five back, responses back, which was surprising to me. I did not expect that. Um, you know, but, you know, that was uh, you know, that's a possibility too, you know?
Yeah, you, you can, you can contact through ancestry, uh, people who post their trees if if they, I think, make themselves accessible. I don't know, they could mark themselves as private, but uh, that's certainly a possibility. And and Dean, if you found somebody who had some information and the sourcing wasn't exactly the best and you might want to know where they got that from, you might reach out to them that way and just see if you get a response. I wouldn't hold my breath with ancestry, but certainly that's the experience with trying to reach a, a lot of DNA matches on ancestry is, you just don't hear from them.
Sometimes you get lucky and they actually have an extensive tree once in a while.
Yeah, but.
And, you know, ancestry is just one of those tools. Now, I haven't used other stuff. Uh, but I probably should have or should be using it because I am in my heritage and a couple others. Um, and I probably should make, be making use of those too, because it's amazing the amount of information that is out there. You know, and that sometimes like, like for these seventeen trees, I'd love to get all seventeen of those people in one room, you know, and say, okay, here's what I have, what do you have? And let's compare notes, you know?
Except sometimes twelve of those trees just copied their information from the other, the other two or three, you know? You see a lot of that, you know, especially if there's a little quirky mistake or something in there that.
Yeah, you, that's right. And you see, they go back to a line like, oh, no, no, that's, that does not matter. No, no, they not do that, you know? Massachusetts people didn't go to North Carolina. All right, thank you, you know, so.
It's like a possible reunion.
Yeah.
Well, uh, if that's it, if then nobody has anything else uh, they wanna discuss, uh, thanks for coming and uh, I'll get this recording up in a few days and I'll try to put some material and especially the things that you all have shared here uh, as well. I'll have that on there available. So uh, and as always, if you've got an idea for a, a meeting, please let me hear from you. We're always looking for a topic. It's like, anyone, anyone, Bueller, anyone? So, okay, well, uh, have a good weekend and uh, we'll see you next month, February. Be that much fun. Yay, okay, take care, everyone.
Bye.